Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special city council meeting to order. If you would all please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Mrs. Riska. Can we please have the roll call tonight?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
And Mrs. Diarcle.
Present.
All right, thank you very much, council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Tonight, we do have a presentation to recognize and congratulate the recipients of scholarships awarded through the 2018 Sterling Heights Community Foundation Scholarship Program. So, before we get started, on behalf of the city council, I want to welcome all of you here and be the first to congratulate you on your accomplishments. And thank you for coming to attend this meeting. This will probably be your first and likely only city council meeting here in the city of Sterling Heights, so we hope you will enjoy it. We appreciate you being here, and we wish you good luck in all of your future endeavors. So with that, I will turn it over to the president of the community foundation, Dr. Marty Brown.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor and council, and welcome to everyone. It's a little awkward, the TV cameras are this way, so we have to face here, and I don't want to have my back to the audience, but it's the protocol here. So anyway, I'm very proud to be a part of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation since its inception. For the past 27 years, I'm one of the few of us left with Mike Lazzara, our treasurer, and Carl Ascoian, our director, who've been in the foundation from day one. And we've done so many wonderful projects, and maybe Carl will fill us in a little more about that, but I can't thank Carl Ascoian as our executive director for doing enough. He's prepared the script, the committee chose and went through hundreds of applications and selected winners, and so many of them would be worthy recipients. And today, we're proud to have a selection of wonderful candidates who've been chosen to receive scholarships through the foundation, but on behalf of various giving organizations in addition to our own foundation. We've done so much good, and we've raised funds and spent funds to disperse to make this city a better place for the community, for the residents, and for the area at large. And at this point, I'm so pleased to turn over the microphone to our executive director, the inimitable and amazing Carl Ascoian. There he is. Okay, I don't know how amazing I'm going to be, but the evening's going to be amazing for our 31 award recipients, I can promise you that. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council members, city manager Vanderpool. Thank you for the opportunity to share the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation's 20th Annual Scholarship Award Program with you and with our entire community. Welcome and congratulations to our 31 scholarship award winners and family members. And we can give him a hand. And welcome to our nine scholarship partners. Is the mic on? Okay, good. Our nine scholarship partners this evening are BAE Systems, Ford Motor Company and the Ford Foundation, General Dynamics Land Systems, the Macomb County Chiropractic Association, the Mayor Richard J. Notti Public Service Endowment, the Selfridge Air National Guard Base Community Council, the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, the Sterling Heights Rotary Club, and the Utica Community Schools Friends of Tom Kroll. We're excited to have you all here with us for this exciting event this evening. You know, our foundation, as Dr. Brown said, was established in 1991 to strengthen the overall quality of life of Sterling Heights area residents by improving their cultural, educational, and recreational opportunities. Now, I'm going to give you a quick tutorial on how we try to do this. The foundation strives to achieve its mission annually, growing its general endowment and its 26 donor-advised endowments. And what we try to do is we seek to create new endowments to generate the key is ever-increasing income in perpetuity, which means forever, that allows it to support with annual increasing grants back to the community every year, more money. We support needs and projects that offer all our residents this improved quality of life that we talked about. And we also try to help foster a community-wide philanthropic environment. And we do this through partnership and collaboration with area businesses, companies, organizations, other nonprofit organizations, and residents, excuse me. Now, Dr. Brown told you, the foundation was established in 1991. There are three of us still standing, and I'll tell you a lot of stories about this. But I can tell you, when we started, and I went back and I looked at some of our past financial statements and saw $36, you're going to hear me talk to you shortly, telling you that we have $1 million clearly in view, okay? So we've come a long way, and we're going to go quite a bit farther than that. So along the way, our main objective is for this foundation, for your foundation, because all of this money that we raise goes back to the Sterling Heights area and goes back to its residents. And it helps us help the fine job that your mayor, that your city manager, and that your council do to bring you all of these great features that this city has that really no other city has in this area. And when next month rolls around and you commemorate your 50th anniversary, you're going to unveil a recreation center that is second none in the state of Michigan, and I think is going to be emulated, wanted to be emulated, and is going to be envied by every community within the state of Michigan and beyond. So you're all to be congratulated for that. We're playing a small part, and we're glad to do that. So our main objective has been to achieve, surpass, and maintain $1 million plus in total assets, to build a self-sustaining annual growing general endowment fund, which we're continuing to do, to annually increase donor-advised endowments, we're at 26, and we're continuing growing those, and develop a strong city and county-wide reputation as one of the leading 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations in our community. So as I said, they're all in clear view, these objectives are there. Barring unforeseen market conditions, in the next couple of years, we should be passing that million-dollar mark. Could be more, could be less. And we're doing it because we're steadily growing our income and our asset base, we're growing our managed endowments and numbers and their value and earnings annually, and they're available for donor-advised admission support. So it's not just their money, all these endowment funds that we have, many of them are picked out by individual donors, and they have specific needs. Well, they earn money, and that money is available for the donors to put back into the community. So that's additional cash, that's additional assets that we have to put back into our community. So, we're growing our relationships and support from new partners and contributors, we've grown our brand in the city, and also strongly in the county. We have strong support from the county government, from Mark Hackle right down the line, our Ritz III, IV, and V galas have done an awful lot to build our reputation within this geographical area, and so will Ritz VI this fall, which you're all invited to attend. It's November 30th, we are honoring the honorable Candace Miller this year. So, and I just met with her, and she's very excited about that. So, you know, we're growing our participation in local events to increase foundation outreach and exposure to Sterling Heights area residents throughout the year, and we're strengthening our relationship with partner organizations. That brings us to this partnership. Our partnership effort is clearly evident here this evening, as our nine scholarship partners are awarding some very, very fine and bright young people a total of 31 scholarships totaling $31,000. Now, we began this program in 1999, and with this evening's awards, we've presented scholarships totaling $371,000 to 421 area students pursuing degrees in general studies, technical training, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, healthcare, and public service fields. Each year, the foundation receives ever-increasing difficult applications to evaluate. We receive hundreds of scholarship applications, and this year was no different. Scholarships are awarded based upon our sponsors' unique requirements. So it's not the foundation awarding you your scholarships tonight, although we have our own too. There are nine sponsors, they set the requirements, they did the evaluation. So please thank them this evening. So, the foundation looks forward to our program every year, as we're proud to support our community's finest students. And we have many of our foundation board members this evening, so I'd like to introduce them at this time. And first, I want to pay special tribute to John Bosomowski. John is president of the Macomb Middle Media School District, and John is also a foundation secretary, and he's chairman of the foundation scholarship committee. John was the driving force behind our scholarship program. John's the driving force that keeps us going. Next, Dr. Martin Brown. Dr. Martin Brown, if you don't know him in this community, you haven't been in this community, he's been president of about every organization that there is. Dr. Martin Brown is now president of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation. He is a charter director, he's the president of the Macomb County Chiropractic Association, Dr. Brown. And I'll just go through the rest here, not diminishing their importance, and I'll ask you to give him a hand at the end. We have Doug Denning, Doug's our foundation vice president, attorney with Denning and Greve. Michael Lazzara, treasurer of the foundation and charter director. Melanie Davis, I know Melanie's here, Melanie is your president and chief executive officer of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation, Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce. Knockdo, Knock, are you here? Knock, oh, there she is, all right. Knock is with Vibe Credit Union, that big vibrant green ball that we're seeing all over the community. They're doing a great job, Knock. Pastor Herb Harbaugh with Memorial Baptist Church. Angie Lohman, Angela Lohman from BAE Systems, I believe. Michael Notti, we all know that name, Michael. Wayne, okay, Wayne's our good friend from Anderson, X-Tine, and Westrick, Wayne? And I don't believe Mark's with us, but I want to mention his name because he's a great asset to us. Mark Passick from the United States Army Tank Automotive Research Development and Engineering Center. So you can see, we have a great amount of talent on this board, people with tremendous abilities, tremendous leadership skills. So, on behalf of all of us, we extend our congratulations to the 31 students honoring this evening. So, I'll tell you a little bit about this program and how you were selected now. I said that the scholarship sponsors set very demanding requirements that you had to meet. In many cases, because the competition was so tough this year, you had to exceed their requirements, and you have. Each of you have very outstanding credentials. You all achieved a very high scholastic grade point average. Yeah, 4.0 apparently is not good enough anymore to win awards. Many of you have grade point averages in excess of 4.5. It's amazing, it's just truly amazing. And this is coming from a dad whose only daughter was a valedictorian of her high school class. You participated in many school and community activities, you very often took on a leadership role. You expressed a strong desire to continue your education and set very high expectations for yourself. I can see many of you sitting right in front of us here this evening, should you choose to be. And I can see through my back, by the many smiling faces, the moms and dads, and the brothers and sisters, and all the other friends here, that you have made them very, very proud with your accomplishments. And I can assure you, we're at the foundation, very, very proud of you. So tonight, you're going to have time to meet a representative from the company who selected you to receive their scholarship, take some time to thank them, and get a photo or two with them. Now, it's time to present our scholarship awards. I'm going to introduce the scholarship sponsor, company representative, who will announce the winners. Students, when they call your name, please come forward, then remain at the podium until all of your sponsors' awards have been presented. Then we're going to take a group photo against the wall here. And Dawn, do we have the certificates of grade?
Yes, I have them here.
Okay, and so Dawn's going to, she's got all the goodies. Now, Dawn's not giving you money, okay? The money's going, it's not that we don't trust you, but the money's going to your school registrar, okay? And so, they will have the money for you, and you don't have to worry about the transition going on there. So, it's time now to begin with BAE Systems. Let me tell you a little bit about BAE Systems. They're a great member of the Sterling Heights community, they've been a program sponsor of the scholarship program for six years. Tonight, they're awarding three $1,000 scholarships to students pursuing undergraduate degrees in STEM, which is the science, technology, engineering, and math curriculum. So I now take this moment to introduce Angie Lohman, who is a director, program director for BAE Systems, to take over the BAE program.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share this great evening, not only with the students and their families, but also with the city. BAE Systems, proud member of this community. Not only were we proud to be able to invest and build in the Sterling Heights area, but also to invest in our community through our giving to various causes in the area, as well as through the development and recruitment of the people that work for us, but more importantly, that next generation. Because if we don't have the new ideas coming from those next STEM leaders, we won't be able to support those who support us, or protect those who protect us in the US Army and the Marine Corps. So this evening, we are very proud to award three scholarships. Our first recipient is Philip Akri. Philip attends Warren Mott High School, earned a 4.333 GPA. He has done well to get involved as a star marauder, art club, 3D design, and volunteering while adapting to a new country, a new community, and a new language. He plans to attend Wayne State University to pursue a degree in biological sciences. Our next recipient is Marissa Donegan. Marissa attends Oakland University, having graduated from Eisenhower High School. She is active in Tau Beta Phi and challenging herself through defense industry intern opportunities, interestingly enough, including BAE Systems, where she is supporting right now. She is pursuing a mechanical engineering degree, wanting to advance military defense and soldier safety. And last but not least, Julia Rice attends Stevenson High School and earned a 4.14 GPA. She is a well-rounded student athlete. As you can see, she is dressed for the occasion, having come straight from softball. And she's an active volunteer supporting Science Olympiad and tutoring elementary students. She plans to attend the University of Michigan for an engineering degree that can be used to enter the cybersecurity field, very well-needed, so congratulations.
While they're taking our photos, our next awards this evening come Ford Motor Company and the Ford Foundation, longtime sponsors of our scholarship program. They are again granting 10 $1,000 scholarships to Sterling Heights residents pursuing undergraduate degrees in STEM. Real fast here, before I introduce Gary, who maybe you're all familiar, Gary Schmidt is the quality control, quality manager of the Ford Sterling Axle Plant. Ford Motor Company, I can honestly say, is probably the strongest supporter that the community foundation has had over its 27 years in existence, and we thank Ford very much for that. Gary, over to you.
Well, it's definitely an honor here tonight to be able to give these awards, see the young, brilliant talent that's here in the audience this evening. Ford is very, very fortunate to have such great minds coming in and building these futuristic cars that we're going to be going to. So, I look at the credentials here, and you all should be very, very proud. Myself, I work in Sterling, and I live in Sterling, so this is really special to me to be giving to Sterling students here, so congratulations to all. So, Ford Motor Company and the Ford Foundation are very proud this evening to recognize the 2018 scholarship winners, who are all Sterling Heights students. So when I call your name, please come up. First one is Tyler Amato. Tyler attends Stevenson High School, he has been admitted to Oakland University, where he plans on studying engineering and computer science, and hopes to work in the auto industry. Very good. Currently holds a 4.0, grade point average, so congratulations. Our second recipient is Andrew Blessed. Andrew attends Stevenson High School, he has been admitted to Grand Valley State University, where he plans on studying mechanical engineering, and hopes to work as an engineer in the manufacturing industry. He currently holds a 4.010 GPA and is an Eagle Scout, so congratulations. Our third one is Brandon Barrero. He attends Henry Ford II High School, same as my daughter did, so congratulations. He's been admitted to Lawrence Tech University and hopes to work in the auto industry also. He currently holds a 3.630 grade point average and is an Eagle Scout. Our fourth recipient is Francisco Corporal. Francisco attends Cusnel High School. He has not yet selected a university he wants to attend, but will be studying engineering. He currently holds a 4.366 grade point average. The fifth recipient is Cameron Dees. Cameron attends Cusnel High School, she has been admitted to Oakland University, where she plans on studying computer science. She currently holds a 4.054 grade point average. Our sixth recipient is Joshua Eck. Joshua graduated from Stevenson High School and is currently attends Wayne State University. He's studying biomedical engineering and hopes to attain a PhD. Currently holds a 3.970 grade point average. Our seventh recipient is Jacob Henry. Jacob attends Stevenson High School, he's been admitted to three universities, but not made his election. He plans on studying industrial engineering. He currently holds a 3.999 grade point average, has been a very active volunteer in high school. Our eighth recipient is Haley Lee. Haley graduated from Sterling Heights High School, she attends University of Michigan, where she is studying computer science and hopes of obtaining an MBA. She currently holds a 3.621 grade point average, she's an active volunteer in many diverse community programs. Also unable to attend. Our ninth recipient is Sarah Salz. Sarah attends Sterling Heights High School, she has been admitted to Lake Superior State University, and plans on studying mechanical engineering with emphasis on robotics. She currently holds a 4.076 grade point average. Our tenth and final recipient is Oscar Tan. Oscar graduated from Sterling Heights High School. He currently attends the University of Michigan, where he is studying mechanical engineering and hopes to work in the auto industry. He currently holds a 3.3 grade point average.
Thanks again, Gary, and thank you to Ford Motor Company and the Ford Foundation. While this large group of Ford scholars are going through a little photo exercise here, I'm going to press on here. Next, our next award recipient is my former employer, where I retired from, General Dynamics Land Systems. General Dynamics has been a very generous supporter of our scholarship program since its beginning in 1999. And General Dynamics this evening will award three $1,000 scholarships to area high school students pursuing undergraduate degrees in engineering. Now, as a General Dynamics retiree, I might want to present these awards on behalf of General Dynamics, because I played an integral role in their establishment of funding, you've heard me talk about endowment funds. Well, General Dynamics has funded the largest endowment fund that the foundation has, in total of about $135,000. So all of these awards now come from the earnings from the endowment fund, that's the beauty of our endowments. So tonight's award winners are Nathan Frazier. Nathan, you're here. Nathan attends Cusnel High School, he earned a 4.397 GPA, and he's active in the math club and youth groups, while also participating in soccer and basketball. Nathan will be attending Renesler Polytechnic Institute, Troy, New York? Troy, New York, for aerospace, aeronautical engineering. Angie, you're going to fight for him, wanting to help people through his aerospace engineering growth. Great job. Next, we have Dina Kurjakoz. Is that close? Okay, all right. Dina attends Utica Academy for International Studies. Dina earned a 4.25 GPA. She's been very active, including the junior leadership Macomb program, that's excellent. And Dina will be attending Duke University. Not only is, correct me if I'm wrong, if I read, Dina, you're attending Duke University at their request with a full scholarship, with a full scholarship for that, that is tremendous. Last, we have Divya Sinivasan.
There she is, congratulations.
Divya attends Stevenson High School, and she too has earned a 4.23 GPA. Her achievements include being a varsity swimmer, participating in many volunteer activities such as ski club and Science Olympiad, including a coach, which is very great, it's great to give back. She'll be attending the University of Michigan, pursuing an engineering degree toward her future as a mechanical engineer. Congratulations.
Marty, step and take a picture, I'll keep movement. Well, here, Marty, go ahead, you're up next. Here, we'll switch, we'll switch with you. I'm going to, Dr. Brown's coming on next. Dr. Brown's going to be talking about the Macomb County Chiropractic Association and awarding their five $1,000 scholarships.
Thank you, Carl. In my capacity as president of the Macomb County Chiropractic Association, I'm pleased to announce that the Chiropractic Association has raised funds to contribute $5,000 scholarships this year. Chiropractic is a natural approach to health, emphasizing the integrity of the spine and the central nervous system. Chiropractic care uses only natural methods, including spinal adjustments and therapies, avoiding any medications or injections or surgery. Chiropractic care may benefit numerous musculoskeletal issues, neuromusculoskeletal conditions, including back and neck pain, headaches, sciatica, numbness, tingling, shooting pain in the limbs, and more. Chiropractic care is a safe and effective health approach for many ailments. Please do contact our association if you require a referral to a member doctor of chiropractic who subscribes to our code of ethical conduct. And now, I'm pleased to announce the winners of our scholarships. First is Bradley Anis. Bradley is a student at Palmer College of Chiropractic in Davenport, Iowa, and he's there right now, so he couldn't be present, unfortunately, he's in Davenport. He has a 3.74 grade point average in the graduate program, and he intends to practice chiropractic profession here in Macomb County after he graduates. Bradley is... Bradley is a rehabilitation intern and a neuroanatomy tutor as well, and he's very active in his church and participates in many philanthropic activities. So, we congratulate Bradley Anis. Thomas Bender is our next recipient, also unable to attend tonight as he's out of state. He's currently a student at Life University in Marietta, Georgia, or as they pronounce it, Myreta. He plans to practice with his father, who's also a local chiropractor at Bender Chiropractic in Clinton Township when he graduates. Tom is a survivor of cancer, and his personal experience with suffering and complex treatment will help him to relate better to his patients. We wish Tom much success in the future, and congratulations to Tom Bender. Now, our third recipient of the five is here tonight with his mom. We call them to step forward, and we have Nathan Blackwell. And Nathan is currently completing his, yes, there he is. Congratulations. And Nathan is currently completing his final year. He just graduated this last week from Saginaw Valley State University. He maintains a solid grade point average and also plays varsity baseball. And Nathan graduates with a bachelor's degree in exercise science. He's been accepted to the Doctor of Chiropractic Program at the Palmer College of Chiropractic in Florida, near Daytona, and he will start his graduate education next fall. Good luck to you, Nathan. Now, we have an entourage. The next winner is Fiona Gallagher, and we'd like to call up her family, who's come all the way from her grandparents and down. She is out of state, also in Georgia while she studies there, but she comes from a long family line of chiropractors, including her grandfather and her great-grandparents. She graduated from Lutheran North High School. She's currently attending Life University near Atlanta, and she's pursuing her undergraduate degree at present. Fiona aspires to ultimately practice chiropractic profession here in Macomb County, and we wish her all the best. And her family is here to accept the honor on her behalf. So, we thank you and welcome you, and congratulations to Fiona.
Want to go in the lineup and take a picture? Congratulations. Congratulations, Terrence. Only the best.
And we have one more. The last is not the least, but Timothy Malter is the fifth recipient of the MCCA scholarships. Tim is currently a student at Life University in Georgia, pursuing his professional degree as a doctor of chiropractic. He previously graduated from Notre Dame Prep at Mid-Michigan Community College. Tim is very active in his church, as well as several specialty clubs at the university in addition to his constant focus on his studies. He excels in the lab portions of his coursework, and he's eager to graduate and begin practicing the chiropractic profession here in Macomb County. Tim's father, also named Tim Malter, is a chiropractor as well, and his mother Donna and father Tim are here, and we congratulate you on your son's achievement. Now, I know he prepared a couple of words. Did you want to share those, Dr. Tim?
Well, I don't want to waste anybody's time.
You only have ten seconds.
No, you know what? If I don't, I'm going to get cursed by my son. So, no, I'll let it go. It seems like you guys are in a rush.
He wrote some beautiful words of appreciation in his absence, so thank you, Carl.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. You want to go over and get your picture?
Sure.
As we continue to move right along, now we have our next award. It's the result of a donor-advised endowment fund in honor of the dedicated service of the longtime dear Sterling Heights Mayor Richard Noddy. So, the Mayor Richard J. Noddy Scholarship for Public Service is a one thousand dollar scholarship awarded to a Sterling Heights college student pursuing a degree in government public service. We're pleased to have Mayor Noddy's son and Foundation Director Michael Noddy here to present the award in his father's name.
Thank you, Carl. I'm very honored to be here tonight. I'm always walking through those front doors there and seeing the large portrait of my father brings a lot of good feelings to me in seeing him there. On behalf of the memory of my father, I'm proud to present the Public Service Award to Spencer Price. Spencer was enrolled at Michigan State University as a freshman, having earned a cumulative GPA of three point six. Spencer is a 2017 graduate of Cusnel High School, where she was very active in dance and co-president for two years. She intends to make this world a better place as an educator for future generations after her graduation in 2021 from MSU. She plans on, she grew up in Sterling Heights and attended Black Elementary. One day, she wants to go back there to be an educator. So, it's my understanding she's not here tonight? Okay.
Okay, I told you he's present and everything, so he's back again. We move to the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights, who is a longtime supporter of the Foundation Scholarship Program. This year, the Rotary Club is awarding two one thousand dollar scholarships to Sterling Heights area students who are high school or college students, presenting the Rotary Awards. Foundation President and Rotary President, Dr. Martin Brown.
Hey, thank you.
And I'd like to call up the incoming president. Todd McKay is here. He told me he was a little too shy to read the script, but I want you to see him because next year, he's going to be reading this script and giving the presentation. So, welcome, Todd McKay. And you know the mayor and council. So, in my capacity as a board member and multiple past president of the Rotary Club, the Rotary was founded in nineteen oh five, and that was internationally in Chicago. But the Rotary Club of Sterling Heights was founded forty-seven years ago, right here in nineteen sixty-nine. And the primary goal of Rotary is to make the world a better place through a wide variety of community service projects, both locally and internationally. We serve autistic and other special needs children. We promote literacy and provide holiday food baskets for the needy. We do water projects in Benaua, the Dominican Republic, where pure water is lacking. We work to build park trails and enhance city parks right here in Sterling Heights. We serve students and host leadership training events. We help local individuals in many special needs situations. Rotary is much more than just scholarships. We also do have fun while we raise funds for their annual golf outing event, and it comes up this year Friday, June seventeenth. Please be welcome to support us and feel welcome to attend a Rotary Club meeting at one of our luncheons on most Thursdays at Ike's Restaurant on Van Dyke. The Rotary scholarships are for qualifying Sterling Heights students devoted to community service, and our winners this year are Sarah Terraf. Sarah? She's present? Sarah is a senior at Sterling Heights High School with a four point oh eight grade point average. She plans to attend Oakland University to study health sciences beginning next fall. And Sarah is a member of the National Honor Society, the Freshman Mentor Program, the Peer-to-Peer Program. She volunteers every Saturday at Troy Beaumont Hospital, and she volunteers at the American House Senior Living Center and the Play Place for autistic children. She plans to pursue a career as an occupational therapist, and the Rotary Club applauds your excellent efforts. And we have one more winner. It's Brenna Wiffles. Brenna? There she is. Brenna resides in Sterling Heights. She's a graduate of the Utica Academy for International Studies. She's currently a student at Grand Valley State University in the Allied Health Sciences Pre-Physician Assistant Program. She'll graduate in April of two thousand nineteen. She's very active in community service work in addition to her studies. She is the service chair of her Circle K chapter. She's been active in numerous charitable activities, including Gleaners Food Bank, UNICEF Salvation Army, and the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Brenna exudes positive energy. She had excellent theories of letters of reference, and we wish you all the best in your future career as a physician assistant. Congratulations. Excellent. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Our next partner this evening is the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Scholarship Awards Program. It's the Selfridge Base Community Council. The council members this year will award three one thousand dollar scholarships to a student of military parents attached to the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. It's my honor to introduce John Bosomowski, Foundation Scholarship Chair, and John will take us through this year's award winners.
Thank you, Carl. First of all, I need to announce that Mr. Steve Remias, who is the president of the Selfridge Base Community Council, and he is also a co-owner and a chief operating officer of the Mack and Ray Banquet and Recreation Facilities along Lake St. Clair. He is not able to be here this evening because of a very important work requirement that he had to meet, and he asked me to do the honors of presenting the awards, and I was very pleased to accept. So, our first item is to define Selfridge Base Community Council. We are a civilian support group for the military personnel and their families attached to the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. Our membership consists of some four hundred local business and professional people who have a dedicated service to the military personnel. And we try to show our appreciation for the many sacrifices, and there are many sacrifices that the families do for us and for the people. And we present the annual college scholarship as an example of the commitments that we have to our military personnel and their families. And first recipient of the one thousand dollar scholarship award is Mark Brooks. He's not, he's not here? He is here? He's not. Well, let me read his bio anyway. Mark resides in the Pure, Michigan, attending Power Catholic High School. Despite some circumstances and learning difficulty, he plans to complete Mott College, Mott Community College Studies for two years and then transfer to a four-year program. Despite his dyslexia, Mark is very proud of his three point five grade point average and his very vigorous, rigorous program. In addition, he is active in his school's marching band, lacrosse, swimming, and track. Mark, we are very proud of you and wish you the best of luck in your college. Let's give him a hand. The next recipient is Kara Peruski. Is Kara here? Okay. Kara is a senior at Obley High School with a grade point average of three point eight, and she plans to study pre-veterinary medicine at Michigan State University. She loves animals, right? Yeah. And she plans to ultimately study the veterinarian medicine program at MSU, Michigan State University, to obtain her doctorate. Now, that is very impressive. Kara is active in basketball, softball, track, marching band, concert band, as well as being a member of the National Honor Society. She also has volunteered at the Selfridge Base Air Show and other events that we offer. Kara, we are very proud of you and wish you success in your very near future. Thank you very much, Carl. Good luck to you. Our next recipient is Sarah Olmer. Sarah resides in Shelby Township and is currently attending Oakland University, pursuing her Bachelor's of Art degree and majoring in psychology. Right? Okay. She works over sixteen hours each week in addition to maintaining a full schedule at Oakland University. That is very impressive. Sarah plans to become a highly respected forensic psychologist focusing on criminal and crime prevention. She is also from a family affiliated with the Selfridge Air National Guard Base. Sarah, we wish you the very best in your near future. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, John. We appreciate it. Next this evening, we have another donor-advised scholarship award. This is the Tom Kroll Scholarship. This was created by Utica Community Schools alumni. The award of one thousand dollars goes to one Utica Community Schools student in honor of Tom Kroll. Mr. Kroll was a retired Utica Community Schools teacher and wrestling coach. Here this evening, we welcome Melanie Davis again, President and CEO of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce, to present this scholarship. Melanie?
Thank you, Carl. I understand that one of the individuals that was responsible for pulling this scholarship together has relocated to Florida, so I'm here to present it tonight. However, I am not only pleased to present it because I'm part of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Board, but also a very proud alumni of Utica Community Schools myself, more specifically, Henry Ford the Second High School, class of eighty-nine, which was a while ago. But I am pleased, I understand Jonah Varney cannot be here tonight, but I am pleased to announce that he is this year's winner of the Tom Kroll Scholarship. Jonah is a senior at Henry Ford the Second High School and has a cumulative GPA of four point oh four. Jonah made the honor roll every year in elementary, junior high, and high school. He has participated in twelve years of baseball, seven years of football, and four years of wrestling, and if that didn't keep him busy enough outside of school, Jonah is a volunteer at Henry Ford Hospital in Macomb. He also plans on becoming a healthcare professional. He's been accepted and plans to attend Michigan State University in the fall. So, let's give Jonah Varney a round of applause.
Thank you, Melanie. Our final award this evening are from the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation. We'll be awarding three one thousand dollar scholarships to students pursuing degrees in vocational training or college degrees. And Board Member Knock Doe from Vibe Credit Union will present our Foundation Scholarship Awards.
Thank you. On behalf of the Sterling Heights Area Community Foundation Board, I am honored to present tonight's recipients. The first one is Stephanie Turner. She also looks like an athlete. Stephanie is a senior at Sterling Heights High School. Her grade point average exceeds four point five oh. She will attend the University of Michigan, pursuing her Bachelor of Science degree in nursing. She plans to become a nurse-nessist. She's a member of the National Honor Society and serves on the NHS Executive Board. Stephanie is also the school softball team captain, obviously. She is active with the Detroit Symphony Youth Orchestra, the Freshman Mentoring Program, marching band, and symphonic band. Our next recipient is Antara Afrin. Antara is a resident of Sterling Heights, graduate of Cass Technical High School, class of two thousand thirteen, and currently a student at the MSU College of Human Medicine with a four point zero GPA. She is pursuing a medical degree to become a socially conscious physician with the goal of eliminating health disparities and to be a vocal and proactive advocate for those in underserved communities. Antara is proud of and looks forward to being the first member of her family to become a physician. Very impressive. Our third recipient is Riley Mayher. Riley is a resident of Sterling Heights, graduate of Brother Rice High School, class of two thousand thirteen, oh, two thousand sixteen, and currently a student at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor with a three point five GPA. Obviously, that's probably where he's at. He has applied to the School of Information to earn a Bachelor of Science in Information to contribute to autonomous vehicle research and implementation, as well as to promote economic, economic, oh, ecologically friendly ways to maintain and increase our food supply to help with those underserved areas, to teach self-sustainability, and to provide employment opportunities. Again, very impressive, and congratulations to all the recipients.
Thank you very much, Knock. Well, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating all thirty-one scholarship recipients this evening. Let's give them a big hand. Also, on behalf of the foundation, these things don't happen by accident. I want to again extend our sincere appreciation to City Community Relations Director Bridget Kozlowski. Bridget? Say out, Bridget. And where's our, where's our certificate lady? Don? Don, come on, Don. We sincerely appreciate their help. Now, if you remember last year, Mayor, and you orchestrated this, well, we're all going to come down here. I invite everybody down here in front, if you will, on the podium, and we're going to try to take a group shot. So, all of the award winners, all of the sponsors, the mayor, the council member, and all of the foundation directors. So, let's do our best this evening here and see what we can do. Bridget, what do you think? Parents, you can get up there and do it. Shoot back this way.
Okay, so I need the mayor, I need the mayor and council.
I need the mayor and council. Please do a center.
So, I need the mayor and council in front along this table here. All right. Rhea, can we get you up?
Come on, Rhea.
Yes, just bring that one. We're going to do one in the hallway after the scholarship, all right? So will have everybody look this way. Ready? One more. And we'll take students in the hallway after this meeting. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations. All right, let's finish it up.
All right. Well, as people start leaving, I will open it up to the council. Is anybody on council that would like to make any comments? Yes, no? If not, I will just, in closing, congratulate all the award recipients and wish you good luck in your future endeavors. Then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak under this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. We'll return in about 10 minutes for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Thank you.